Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 14th meeting of the North Andover Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We're going to move along to public comment. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item, or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for a public comment?
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Capola wants to.
Okay.
I'm going to bring the microphone to him.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, this is Brian Capola. How are you?
Hi, Mr. Capola.
Yep. Okay, this evening I came to speak because me and Mr. Robert Shapiro, the head of Public Works, met last week, and we had talked about what was going to be going on with the project, particularly near here in Main Street. The question I had now was, when was there going to be a meeting over bus shelters? Because I had talked about needing a bus shelter down where I am, and would like to know when there's going to be a meeting regarding bus shelters. Because when you have to flag the bus sometimes to get it, sometimes the bus starts like out in the streets, and sometimes it can be dangerous to go out there and get it. I'm legally blind, as you may know, you see this cane?
Yeah.
And I take public transportation in Ubers and Lifts a lot, so this is why I'm here to bring up these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I know that.
August 14th.
Okay. On August 14th, people talk about that. Is anyone else here for public comments? Okay, not seeing any public comments. We're going to move on to Item A, which is an update on the recreation complex. So we welcome Craig Miller and Tim Wong to come out. You can have a seat there if that's easiest for you. And our screen's not on. Thank you. It's all right, we can turn. Oh, magic touch. Oh, no. Okay. So, welcome and thank you, and take it away.
Can you see all right?
We can see now. Thank you.
All right, so my name's Craig Miller, Principal of Waterfield Design Group. I'm a civil engineer. With me tonight is Tim Wong. He's our landscape architect. We've been working for the last several months to modify the project to break it up into phases, so that the first phase could meet the town's existing budget for what's available to spend. And so, what's on the screen right now is the existing conditions plan. I'll move it to... This is the proposed project plan, broken down into three phases. Phase one is the part of the project that would start first, would be within the available budget, which from our understanding is $7.7 million. We're still working on updating and finalizing the estimate for Phase one, but we'll be well under the $7.7 with the first part of the project. It includes a softball field, a soccer field, and Tim can explain some of the other details that are included in the Phase one project. Important elements of the Phase one project, we're keeping the fence line that's there today, the existing fence line. That was something that had to come up in previous design work with the abutters in that area, so the fence line that's there today is where the project begins. So we've modified the plan to accommodate that. But every other aspect of what we had shown previously in the project is going to be included. Do you want to explain some of the big picture items that are in Phase one?
Yeah, I think the key items are the softball field, which you see in the corner there, and that'll be a lit field, and then the multi-purpose field, which you see is the rectangle there. And then also included there is a building for restrooms and storage and utilities. And then also, if you see on the lower left-hand side of Phase one, that also has other family picnic, shuffleboard, bocce, half-basketball court, those kind of amenities. So even with Phase one, it'll be something that could, for many people in the town.
So I'm going to show you another slide that shows how Phase one impacts the rest of the property. So you can see, we've been careful to also determine where that Phase one boundary is, so that we're not impacting the rest of the property as much, since we don't know how long the gap might be between Phase one and Phase two. And so you can see how the existing softball field will remain, and we've got existing parking that will be used to access the new field. We go back and forth here, that's... We're not building the parking in Phase two, we're making it, taking advantage of the existing parking that is already present. In terms of construction... Well, okay, so here's a close-up of all that. That's a little bit easier to see. And then here, we're showing it, you can see my cursor, this gray area here is a construction-access road. So there'll be no construction vehicles through the neighborhood, there'll be no construction vehicles interacting with the preschool areas. This will be completely separate access off of Route 125 directly into a staging area, which directly abuts the Phase one work area. So we try to keep things as isolated and separate as possible.
Yeah, and as was in the previous design, this allows us to not have any construction vehicles on the residential streets up on the north side, up on the top of the page, you know, the Parker Street and the other boulevard there, that's the exit to the Atkins Elementary School.
One of the other major elements we had to do to get to a phasing that would work was to make sure that the drainage for the Phase one project will remain within the Phase one project area. So we separated out the drainage from each phase, so that they are standalone in terms of how they manage stormwater runoff. And in terms of the timeline, we're looking to finish the design on this phasing breakout this summer, actually this fall, right?
Yeah.
Put summer into fall, advertise in the fall for spring 2026 construction. We'll be going in front of the Planning Board and the Conservation in the next several weeks and months, to present the details of this phasing of the existing project or the previous project, so that we'll get into the weeds with those two boards on how the project works.
Actually, we already found that the Conservation Commission permit still extends, and we actually applied for it and received an extension with them, so that's a hurdle that's already been crossed.
Any questions?
Can I just have a little framework? So if we remember correctly, when we left our last town meeting, we had about $7.2 million available to use this project on. And after it didn't pass, the thought process was, let's go back and see what we can build with the $7.2 million that we have. So this is super helpful, I think, to give us a little bit of perspective, but I also think it's going to be important for us to go and meet with the Fields Committee and to have a kind of public meeting as well, so people understand that the plan certainly has changed, maybe think about a survey, that kind of thing. But we wanted to make sure we got this before you first, because obviously it's different from what we first expected, less than what we first expected.
And we will be continuously updating the project page that is on the town's website. We waited to do so until after this meeting, so you had the first look at this, but we will actively be updating that with what's happening as we get new information.
How long would a project like this take if we started in the spring?
The Phase one project?
Yes, just Phase one.
Yeah, well, in a...
Obviously, just a ballpark, but...
Yeah, it's potentially two construction seasons, conservatively.
Sure.
When you ask a contractor to move quickly, costs rise, so we want to be as cost-conscious as we can be, and give the contractors the best possible environment to give the town the best price that's available. So we want to not rush anyone and reserve the option for potentially two seasons, but we'll look for them to try to finish it in one, if possible. Construction seasons are longer than they used to be, and sometimes we can stretch into November and December and still get work done, so...
All right, other questions or comments?
I have a few questions, if that's all right. The construction access slide that you had.
Yep.
I forget exactly how it works to connect NAMs with Atkinson and the Early Education Center. Will that be closed at all during that period, or that'll be kind of essentially a four-way stop, as you see it?
Where, which area?
So coming off of 125, the construction, go to the east, you're right there, exactly.
Yeah.
So as you cross the access road between the two schools?
Right here.
Yeah. Is the plan to close that access point? Is it just a controlled access? Will there be trucks at the same time, that there's going to be drop-off, pickup? So that's the only potential for conflict, I just want to make sure that that's being addressed.
Yeah, one of the easier ways to deal with that is to have a construction flagging person present to direct. We can look into full stop and that sort of thing, but it might be cleaner, safer to go the construction flagging route.
Yeah, it's not a ton of trucks coming back and forth all the time, correct, or is it?
No, there isn't, no. And they're scheduled, too, so you kind of know when things are coming and going, right? So it's not like a business would be where people are coming and going at all times.
Yeah, you could halt it during pickup and drop off.
Correct. We can control when trucks need to cross that area and when they shouldn't cross that area. So we can easily work that out with the town and make sure we have a schedule. Windows for when deliveries and such can be made. Obviously, the workers get there early in the morning, so there's not a lot of that happening.
And Planning Board will require a construction plan for parking and driving.
You mentioned the drainage being standalone in each phase. Did we lose cost efficiency with that versus one overall drainage plan, or is it too early to tell?
No, we did not lose any money in making that switch. We just had to reorganize how it happened. Yep.
So one doesn't tie into the other at all?
No.
No. Any other questions? It's just nice to see you here.
It's nice to be here after all this time.
I guess my only question is the protection. Again, we'll have to obviously work that out, but the protection against the elementary school and, you know, if that's an active construction site, just the safety that we'll have to...
There's no question. This plan is focused on transportation access. There's a whole nother set of drawings that we'll be producing as part of the construction plan that show how to protect and separate the construction activities, especially in the area that it abuts, the elementary schools, middle school as well, you know, but there'll be Jersey barriers, fences, whatever is required to make sure there's a hard break.
Between the two.
And things are not, you know, that's...
Also, maybe take an access probably. Oh, right. Yeah, so...
I think one of the nicest features, too, is that Atkinson will get its hardtop space during that phase, and the access still allows for some teams to use that field, the middle school fields.
You can go back to the plan.
Since we're always pinched for field space.
Even with the construction access is sold, is there?
Yeah, like lacrosse practices on that portion of the NAMs field, and the baseball field that you're cutting through doesn't get used, I don't think.
Right, yeah, we're still able to kind of save half of that field, that half of the baseball field for continued use, even during construction.
And that plan, only the light yellow is turf, right? Everything else is natural materials?
Correct, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much, it's nice to hear an update.
Okay, thank you, keep going, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, just to reiterate, just for the public that's interested, we're going to update the website with these slides, we're going to be doing a public meeting, we'll be at the Fields Committee, so I don't want people to think they're not going to hear anything else, no.
This is just the beginning.
This is just the beginning, yes, and we will be corresponding with you.
A new beginning.
New beginnings. Look at it.
We purposely kept this briefing big picture. We're going to get into the weeds at the Planning Board level, so...
Sure, that's great, thank you. And I'm sure the public will have a lot of good ideas and input, so...
We need that input, yeah, and that's the vehicle for that, so we're looking forward to that communication, that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Item B, the Comment Letter to Mass Housing Regarding Project Eligibility Application for the Proposed 40B Development at Zero Prescott and 67 High Street.
Madam Chair, could we invite Assistant Town Manager Shapiro to join us for the conversation? He did most of the drafting on this letter.
That would be great.
Great, and you should know that the Planning Board is meeting tomorrow, tomorrow, I believe, to consider a similar letter with some similar concerns and some more in-depth concerns. And so we'll attach these both together, and as you know, we did get an extension on responding to the state with our comments, so it is due, I believe, by August 14th now, so we're well ahead of that timing. So what I can do is I can have Andrew run through with you kind of a high level, I know you've all read it, and you can let us know if you have any additional things that have come to light that you might be interested in. The only thing that I will note is that we do reference the watershed flooding study. We do now have that, is available on the website, we sent the link to all of you, and it'll be presented at our next meeting.
Okay, just run through a little bit, as the Town Manager just mentioned, I know you've probably reviewed the draft, taken a look at it, but at a high level, really what we're trying to do here is provide a wide-ranging response, kind of covering the high notes about how we perceive this project in this context. And just for the folks at home, this is a preliminary eligibility application, so we're really only commenting, at this point, to Mass Housing that is reviewing the application that was submitted to them, to basically say that the site is appropriate for this type of development for housing, which then leads to a process where presumably the applicant will then, if they get that certification from Mass Housing, then they'll be in a position to turn around and apply for a comprehensive permit through the state, and that project is then reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Typically, projects of this size and this nature are usually, as you all know, reviewed by the Planning Board, in this case it would be reviewed by the ZBA, and we are taking action to educate the ZBA on the process. We have a scheduled meeting...
Thursday.
Is it this Thursday? Yeah, this Thursday with KP Law to review 40B, and we are also going to be applying to the Mass Housing Partnership. They have a program to basically provide assistance to ZBA's, technical assistance on the process, so we're going to be doing that as well. So the letter, we're obviously covering the fact that we've done a fair bit in the way of housing, both in terms of the Planning Board approving multifamily housing, but also our work on inclusionary zoning, enacting in MBT communities, multifamily overlay district recently, accessory dwelling units, and so forth, and the fact that also we have a 40R district at Osgood Landing as well. So just making it clear to Mass Housing that North Andover does take housing seriously, we are a housing choice community, and actually, we just got recertified for another five-year period, so kudos to the Planning Department on working on that for us. So we do take housing seriously, and we want to see more options for housing, and we want to see affordable housing in North Andover. We provide an overview of the project, it's a 296 rental units on approximately six acres of the property. It's located within an industrial S zone, as well as it crosses over into Residential Four underlying zoning districts, as well as Sub District A, which is the historic mill area overlay. We provide a little context on the surrounding area. Obviously, we know that we've seen multifamily housing developed in that area recently through Avalon, and we know that there are also historic mill properties that have been repurposed for commercial offices, as well as retail, restaurant, and some residential housing as well. The proposed building height, approximately 53 feet, that's in the Residential Four portion of the site. We just point out some zoning inconsistencies in terms of the fact that we have laid out some dimensional standards in our zoning code, and this exceeds or breaches some of those norms that we typically see. Now, again, for the folks at home, the reason why they're able to propose it this way is because 40B is designed to sort of provide a more streamlined permitting path for developers when communities have less than 10% of their subsidized, or excuse me, housing stock is subsidized, meaning less than 10% is affordable by state standards. So there's a little bit of deference provided to the developer in this case. So again, just to go over that, the 53 feet in the Residential Four portion of the site significantly exceeds the 35-foot height limit permitted by Wright, and that would ordinarily require a special permit under the Sub District A overlay. The proposed FAR, floor area ratio of 1.7 for the project, exceeds the 1.0 maximum allowed by Wright, and that would also normally require a special permit. So we talk about that in terms of massing. In terms of setback, the proposed 16 and 1/2-foot side setback along 39 Prescott Street is not currently compliant with what would normally be a 35-foot setback requirement outlined in Sub District A zoning. And then typically, the first 15 feet of the setback would need to be open and landscaped, which the current plan doesn't reflect. And I just also want to reiterate, you know, these are issues that the Planning Board is really jurisdictional to. Jean Enright, our Planning Director, is fantastic, and she knows the zoning code in and out, and a lot of the comments here are based on some of the notes and the discussions that she initially had with the Planning Board, things that she has pointed out, and as the Town Manager mentioned, they're going to be meeting tomorrow night, finalizing their comments, and then we'll be able to work with them on incorporating any of those final comments into this draft. Traffic access and circulation, we're just pointing out that, you know, obviously a project of this size could introduce substantial additional traffic to the area. We're recommending an independent traffic impact study, looking at intersections, strip generation, queuing, and emergency vehicle circulation, and that's typically pretty common during site plan review at the Planning Board. We're also going to be looking at emergency access and public safety. It says the proposed private right-of-way, excuse me, the private way serving the site, it's only approximately 20 feet wide, and due to 90-degree parking along both sides, which poses potential obstructions for emergency access, just something to consider. We're talking, we also made comments about the stormwater, floodplain, environmental conditions. So this is where we get into the information about the recently completed Kochikwick-Brook Floodplain Management Report, and so to refresh everyone's memory, that was an MVP-grant-funded project. It just wrapped up the end of last month. The project, the report is available online for anybody who wants to review, and we will have a presentation of this body, I believe, next month, your next meeting. So the report just runs through some flood risks. In short, there was a lot of modeling done based on previous floods that have occurred, but also data loggers that were installed in the area where the Kochikwick-Brook flows from the Merrimack River, excuse me, from Lake Kochikwick to the Merrimack River. And so what the modeling shows is that in a present day, 50-year storm, the model shows that the bank of Machine Shop Pond, which is Mill Pond, is overtopped by about almost two feet of water. And then the flooding footprint wraps around the buildings between Machine Shop Pond and High Street, including 9 through 43 High Street. And it just, you know, there's a little description here about what, you know, some of the modeling shows in terms of the flooding. I want to stress to the folks at home, though, that, you know, a 50-year flood doesn't happen every day, and it happens infrequently, but we are cautious, because obviously we had some major flooding here in the past couple of years, as folks know, and major flooding events are becoming more and more frequent, as we know as well. And there was also a projected, you know, 2070-100-year storm that talks about the Machine Shop Village Pond overtopping by about one feet, and talking about where it kind of wraps through different areas of the High Street area. So this is all just to say that, you know, we should be looking seriously at the nature of future potential flooding events, and what that could mean in terms of where this project's located. It's less than 200 feet from the, excuse me, is it 200 feet or 300 feet? Less than 300 feet away from that pond, so, and it is uphill of the pond, which is an advantage, but something to nonetheless take into consideration. And then compatibility with zoning, with, excuse me, with surrounding neighborhood and zoning context. So we talked about the building height, the FAR, minimal setbacks, they exceed those standards that we were talking about that's in the underlying zoning, and that scale and massing could potentially be considered out of character with the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent multifamily homes. Of course, that's all subjective, but those are things to take into consideration. And then municipal services, the introduction of nearly 300 units, you know, it could lead to burdens on municipal water, sewer, and solid waste services. These are things that we typically look at when we review projects at the Planning Board. Certainly in terms of traffic, maybe less so, water, sewer, and solid waste, although we have, more recently, we did an analysis of water and sewer demand, I believe, but we haven't taken into consideration this 296 project, so just something to keep in There's a table that shows the Zero Prescott proposal compared to some of recent projects that have gone on in North Andover, they're compared to the Avalon projects, Minco at 505 Sutton Street, the Princeton Properties project on Route 125 in Berry Farms, which was a 40B, or I believe our last 40B. And you'll note that the acreage is less than all these other projects, the number of units is higher than all these other projects, lot coverage is significantly larger in percentage than all these other projects, the FAR is higher, and the units per acre is higher. So, again, not casting any judgment on that, it's just to show you the numbers as they lie, and the state should definitely see that. And then I provided some information about the master plan. This is actually an exercise that we typically do with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. They have a good sense for this, and they work with me on that. But basically what I did was I took some, so this was my independent judgment, I took some of the strategies from the master plan that I thought could fall outside of congruence with what's being proposed here, just for consideration, again, kind of an objective, subjective, excuse me, determination on my part, but I provided some rationale for some of these, just looking at land use strategy three, for instance, focus new development and zoning changes along key commercial corridors that may be more appropriate for higher-density, mixed-use development and key nodes or intersections. Now, the area that we're talking about, you know, one could consider it a keynote in that there's, you know, there's employers there, there's other multifamily housing developments, you've already seen sort of a higher-density form of development in that area, but on the other hand, it's not really in a key commercial area, it's not on Route 125, it's not on Route 114, where a larger project could potentially be absorbed a little more seamlessly. Talked about the housing strategy 15, continuing to review the impact of new housing development on town's public infrastructure and services. We haven't done that exercise really yet, so we'd like to understand that. In terms of economic development, ensuring commercial and industrial land is not converted to support only multifamily uses, but instead of mix of uses promoting vibrant commercial centers and corridors. So, you know, again, the area itself is somewhat of a mixed-use environment, you've got commercial interspersed with the multifamily, but this development itself is all multifamily exclusively, and the more recent high-density development in the area has also been exclusively multifamily, if you're looking at the Avalon projects. So just something to consider, and there's a couple of other master plan strategies that are outlined there as well. And then we just conclude, kind of rounding out what we had discussed, and we talked about the fact that we do intend to apply for assistance, and that pretty much wraps it up. Happy to take questions. Happy to take questions or discuss it further.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Comments, questions?
Andrew, with regards to the flood plan, in looking at the documents quickly, even the 100-year 2070 doesn't reach the boundaries of this project, correct? Is that fair to say? I'm not saying it doesn't weigh in, I think it's very valid because it's right adjacent, but I just want to make sure it's not already building something that could potentially be in a flood.
You know, I'd have to, I wouldn't be comfortable commenting on that. Yeah, I don't have a recollection of exactly where the 100-year reaches to in the model.
In the study, okay, all right.
I just will add that the study does have a lot of mitigation measures, some of which are already in place, so I don't want people to get nervous, but also talks about grant funding that's available for additional mitigation, so it's going to be a great conversation on the 14th for us to have, but we thought it was important to include it here, because we just, we want to get anything on the record that we may want to have looked at or investigated further.
Seems very apropos, given that we just had it, we just had an incident here a few years ago, it's as close as you're going to get to it.
And I would also just quickly say, you know, the proponent of the project is the general owner of the mill properties, and I think they are highly sensitive to what happened a few years ago. So, I don't think they would have any interest in building anything or investing a significant amount of investment into a project that was going to be vulnerable to the type of flooding that we saw a few years ago, a couple of years ago.
And they've already taken many measures in that area.
Correct, yeah.
I had one more question. On number five, municipal services, and we talked about water, sewer, solid waste, can we also add to that emergency services?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's referenced, emergency vehicle circulation is part of traffic and access and all that, but actually, it could be an impact.
Yeah, absolutely. Andrew, how, since it's 40B, and they, do they, they don't really have to listen to any of our concerns?
No, no, they do, they do. I mean, there's reasonable, there's like parameters that you can comment on. You know, we have to get a little more, I think a lot of that will be better known when KP Law has their discussion with the ZBA, and likewise, when we are able to talk to Mass Housing Partnership and they come in. Admittedly, I haven't worked through myself any 40B projects, Melissa might have a little more experience than even me, but, so I don't know if you want to speak to that, Melissa.
I was just curious, like, how open they are to our comments, right?
It's an awful lot like Dover, right? Except that the entire, yes, it's very high level. But they do take into consideration things about public safety, resources, traffic, all of that are things that we look at. One of the things that I think is kind of important to remember in this instance is that when you are under your 10% threshold, you are vulnerable to a predatory 40B, right, up to 250 units. In this instance, they are proposing 296 units, right? So, there may be some flexibility in negotiating about some things when we're talking about number of units versus some of the setbacks, et cetera, that may be concerning, but that's something that we'll have to get into as we go, because we want to make sure that we have enough units, that we're not vulnerable for another 40B. So, it's a little bit of a wired or follow, but Thursday is the training. It is a virtual, it's virtual for the zoning board of appeals, however, it will be shown on cam, and we will have it videotaped for people at home that are interested in learning about 40B, or some of the other committees that perhaps have not been through a 40B process before.
That's a great idea, we appreciate it.
It'll be good.
Do we have any other buildings in town that are 53 feet?
I don't know offhand. Someone asked the question at the site visit whether or not there are any other five-story buildings, and that's always a tricky thing. Stories are different than number of feet. You could have a three-story building that's very tall with high ceilings, right? So, but I believe the only other, there's a five-story building at Sutton Pond, I believe the Sutton Pond condos are five stories. I don't know if they get to that height, but they are, and the other thing with this project that I think-
Shouldn't be too much below that if they're five stories, but yeah.
Yeah, the other thing with this project is it is sitting up on a little bit of an elevation, higher elevation than some of the other buildings in the area, so, you know, I can understand the concern about height, the sensitivity to height in this particular location.
The plans account for that in some way.
Yeah, it's staggered, yeah. Four stories on one side, five stories on the other, I bet the height is really what matters, right? No one really cares how many stories it is, it's how high it's coming in.
That's right.
And thank you to Jean for pointing out the setback, Adam as well, I think that's, I think it's really, really important at that location. I'm done.
Anyone else have comments?
Thank you, that was really comprehensive, and, you know, took into account all of the things that we've all mentioned at some point or other, and again, I mean, I think it's a situation where I don't know how much we can do about it, but it's just important that we express that we need these things to be looked at before we-
Absolutely. And one more thing I'll just quickly say before I go is I am going to put together a webpage for this, so folks at home can track the progress and, you know, get access to information about it, and see the plans, and so on and so forth. So, as this project evolves, that information will be updated, so.
That would be great, thank you. I'd love to be able to direct people to-
Yeah, of course.
Actual information on the town website makes a really big difference, so thank you.
One quick question, is this, is this a project where you, I mean, you would have neighborhood meetings, where we've got such close abutters, like-
So, you wouldn't, under a 40B, certainly not be required to do that? We, I think that, I think that RCG would be very open to that, considering that many of the abutters are their own residents, so we can certainly talk to them about that.
There's a string of single families, right?
Yes, right along the way, yeah.
Yes, they have the apartments, but-
Yeah, they have abutters behind the forest area, too.
Yeah, it might go a long way to have them.
I'm sure, I'm sure that they would be happy to do that.
RCG, again, what Andrew said was so important, like, they have a vested interest in that property, and-
They have said, on many occasions, they cannot do that again. So, and I believe them, so, yes.
All right, thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item C, we are intending to enter into the continued public hearing. So, for the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England to locate poles, wires, and fixtures along and across Peters Street, along and across Waverly, we're going to do them all at once, right, and along and across Hillside, and so I will take a motion to move into the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We're now in the public hearing. Is there anybody?
Do we have a vote?
All those, Rusty. Okay, all those in favor. All right, now we're in the public hearing. So, we start with their presentation. So, we'd love to start with you presenting to us these three-
Wow, look what they're presenting.
Looks beautiful.
These three petitions we have in front of us. I think there are some very, you know, we have abutters here who will have commented after that, but it'd be really helpful to see what you have, show us.
My name is Brian Sathler. Maybe some of you remember me, I was here maybe like a month and a half ago now, but I'm with National Grid, and I'll be representing them today. We're at 1101 Turnpike Street here in North Andover.
Yeah, my name's Matthew Irvin, I represent TRC Companies, and our office is out of Franklin, Massachusetts, and I guess, I'm sorry, no, I don't want this before. All right, so, three poles in question that, as far as I was aware of, were located on Hillside, two of them on Hillside, and one of them on Peters. I understand was correct on that, right?
Well, we think we had asked about all three, and you know, I think you had asked for plans detailing where the buildings were, right, for all three?
Yeah, so that's the three on Hillside, and how they're going to get moved into the properties, and then there's the one on Peters, like you said, that gets moved, so.
Start with this.
Got to find that one, tuck that one down. All right. All right. Find Peters, we'll start with that one.
Get the whole plan set.
Oh, yeah. All 44 pages of it.
Fairly large plan, yes.
This is trial up 114 right now. It's Waverly.
Apparently, I went the wrong way.
Looking for the one on Peters Street?
Yes.
Wrong way.
Page number.
Yeah, I think it was like the, I think it was like the second page.
It's not the one really- The second page on the-
Is, yeah, it was the way-
Shortened one, as far as I know.
Right there, there we go. That's the first intersection.
Okay. All right, so.
We did ask for drawing the buildings on it, but-
I don't have full printouts of this entire, this entire plan. I do have the printouts of the ones that were the major concerns, so, we would like to start with this, as far as relocations.
So, where are-
Maybe tell us what we're looking at.
Yeah, tell us what we're looking at.
Okay.
There are three that you're talking about.
All right, this intersection-
Also 114.
Well, we're going to be moving pole, crap, 3268, which is this one right here, it's going to be moving eight feet further back from the existing location, two feet further north, I think that's north. So, it's going to be moving, it's going to be moving into the new right-of-way easement area.
So, it's a new easement, a new right-of-way, not the existing right-of-way?
Correct.
So, it's currently on private property?
It is currently, as far as I know, on private property.
It's all trees?
Okay.
Okay.
What else we have? All right, we are also moving pole 7304 back seven feet. That should still remain in the existing right-of-way.
Which is not in North Andover, though. I don't think that's us. That's all Lawrence.
Three communities all come together, right there, right where you have that.
Correct or wrong, I believe that's Lawrence.
I cannot read what this one is. All right, it's 2314. That is also going to be, going to be going into the new right-of-way as a result of moving the corner of the intersection back.
Yeah, which is also still in Lawrence, yeah.
Those are a little bit further.
Not our jurisdiction, yeah.
Moving things around that I don't want to move. And we're actually going to be moving pole 2241 out further from the right-of-way over into the side block area, grass technically, but, so that one will not cause it-
It's moving closer to the road.
It's moving closer to the road, yes.
Interesting.
Is that one also in Lawrence, though?
Where is that? I think we're going the wrong way.
No, that's, that's in front of Walgreens, that's North Andover, yeah.
So, but these are not, or is that the Waverly one?
That's, yeah, it's Turnpike and Waverly, it's right in front of Pecca Walgreens.
Okay.
All right, that one's getting closer to the road.
This pole here, 4554 is actually getting replaced in the same location, so that will not be affected by any kind of right-of-way issues, and we're also going to be moving pole 1241 closer to the road with the, in the middle of the new island that's going in.
Does moving poles closer to the road pose any additional safety concerns?
Not typically, not unless you're putting it into a very busy intersection or something, rather than like an island into a parking lot or along a street. Because these are all, have curbs, so, I mean, it's not going to be that much different than it was before.
Okay.
Would these pole numbers not match the notice? I'm just curious, just because looking at the notices, it looks like these are not things, I don't think this is what we've talked about in the past, I don't think these are the-
I am actually not sure about the pole numbers as far as the notices are concerned.
These were the initial ones. This intersection was the initial-
It was, but so on the notice for Hillside, the pole numbers are incorrect.
Or incorrect.
The poll numbers you just mentioned are not on the public notice.
It's not on the public notice.
So, we have poles 3353, 3268, you did mention 4554, 4555, 4556, but those are, I believe, there's no, I think you mentioned a 23 or 20 something, 2000s?
I may have, these pole numbers are actually coming from the plans that were provided as being approved by the DOT, so I'm not sure how these things changed as far as the pole numbers.
Well, they came from National Grid.
These are the plans of, well, yes, these are the plans that were approved by DOT, though, sorry.
I do-
But they're not matching the public hearing, the public notice.
I, yes, I'm not sure how that happened.
Yeah, mistakes sometimes happens when people are creating drawings and creating easement and petition files and CAD files, so sometimes things get a little confusing, especially for large projects like this one. I guess we can get OB to send over a rectified version.
I think that would be in order, yeah.
Yeah, so that'd be great. I know there was a question concerning a pole going into a, like a Burger King parking lot at some point.
That was on Peters Street.
Yep, yep, so I just wanted to ask you guys if you had any concerns about that pole still, or if you want me to just give a brief overview.
I don't know.
Yeah, I guess we would like to-
There's a lot of conservation in that area, because there's a small pond, it's behind the hardware store, and there was a small pond, I know it well, I skated all that for-
I knew you were going to say that.
A long time.
Can, yeah, we had to-
This is 1590 and 1591 are the two poles on the original public hearing.
For Peters.
For Peters Street, yeah.
So, and what they just showed us was the original or Waverly?
We were down at Waverly just there, but-
Yeah, and now we're going to go to Peters, and then we'll go to Hillside.
Some of the poles that were showing Waverly weren't on the original notice at all, so.
Yeah, that's what, because they're not in-
No, I think they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the pole, the Burger King parking lot. There's this pole right here.
So, I know, I think, I think we had concerns about how that pole might be inside their parking lot and might be taking up some lot spaces there. After talking with TRC and the one who designed it, it seems like they put the pole in National Grid easement area, and then the anchor is going into grass, so it won't be taking up any spots in that Burger King parking lot at all.
Can you zoom in a second? Just one slide.
A little hard to follow.
Yeah, these, these maps can be confusing.
Okay, got it, so it's a CVS drive, okay.
Where's the CVS?
Because I'm confused, because you said that was 1589?
One turn Turnpike.
Okay, because the, yeah, the original plan shows 1589 on the CVS side of Peters Street, is that correct? And that's, and it's moving to the other side of Peters Street, is that-
No, it's staying, it's staying on the same side, it's just getting moved slightly further back from the existing location. It's basically going to be placed right behind it, so it's going to be about a foot difference between the current location and the proposed location.
That's into the CVS, right?
Yeah, that's the CVS side of the street. I'm sorry, I apologize, I know you don't see what I'm looking at, I'm looking at the original public hearing notice, which shows 1589 on the north side of Peters Street, right there.
That is 1589-8.
Huh, okay. Which one are we talking about?
So, we're talking about 1591?
Talking about this one, this is the Burger King parking lot right here.
Yes, that's also 1589.
But it's not a year's-
There's additional number, because it's, it's connected with 1589, so it'll have, it's part of the same pole- There's additional number, because it's, um, it's connected with 1589, so it, uh, it'll have, it's part of the same pole, but not quite, if you understand what I'm trying to say.
Sometimes we give poles like hyphens and additional numbers at the end, as in like, oh, this pole supports this pole in some sort of way. So that's why we put that number in there.
Right, but that's not shown on the public hearing, the public notice.
Okay.
The 1589 on the Burger King side.
Correct.
And then there's 1591 that's being moved six feet into the Burger King parking lot.
And they're saying it's in their right-of-way, or is it...
I don't think we've gotten to that one yet.
Okay, let's go to that.
And I can't, is that Burger King or is that closer to Rocky's? Yeah, I, well, I don't know, I can't tell how far back it is, so it's... I just don't think the plans we're looking at here in any way match the public hearing.
Actually, it's all you.
I'm hoping when we get further up the street, they will, but I'm not sure.
Because of all the construction.
It's 1589, I may go real fast.
It will be seven feet back from the curb when it's completed.
Okay.
Another, one of the questions about this was actually about the location of this. But as you can see here, this is the existing line, this gray line.
Okay.
This is gonna be the new entrance, so that will not cause any problems either.
So, all right, so the Burger King curb cut's getting relocated further up, okay.
So the entrance is changing, and therefore it's not an issue.
There are several new buildings on those sites that we are talking about.
As opposed to...
Fair warning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, so that's getting, that's the one.
That gets refigured.
Right, this one right here.
This is much easier to look at.
Okay, um, head this way. To 1590, okay. Where's 1590 going?
1590 is being moved approximately...
Across.
Nearly 11 feet back from its current location.
Okay, that's the one that says six feet in the public hearing. Or no, I'm sorry, right, it says 11, no, it says 11, I was looking at 1591, I apologize. That one's correct.
It would be six feet back from the curb.
Got it, got it. And if you keep heading up, I'm guessing 1591, same thing, okay.
Nowhere near as severe of a change on 1591.
Okay.
So this could be what?
You could, Peter Street, yeah, the, the curb cuts looks like, yeah.
So now we need to go...
To Hillside.
Up to Hillside.
Hillside. All right, the two poles in question on Hillside.
So I think there are a lot of questions on Hillside, and would any of you like to start or should we just invite?
Yeah, I, I was, it's your call. Who, who's gonna know the property better, but I think there was definitely some concerns about one of the poles, I'll look at the original plan, being relocated, I think it was 2881 and 2882, I think were the two big ones. Maybe it was 2882 is probably the biggest one, was being shown as being moved 26 feet into the property, into private property?
That is this one here, yes, and it's being moved back considerable now. Get an exact measurement for you.
Okay, we have...
As possible. 27 feet.
So that's getting moved 27 feet, give or take, and staying within the right-of-way?
Well, with the, um, the updated right-of-way, this line right here, this purple line on the inside, that is going to be the new permanent right-of-way.
Is there an agreement with the property owner?
As far as I'm aware, this...
Okay, so can, I think...
I think we, I need to make a few suggestions from the beginning.
I think...
So it does appear that we have some discrepancies between our, our plans, what was filed in the public hearing, and your plans. So what I would recommend is that we just continue the public hearing, close it entirely, ask National Grid to refile with corrected plans, and after having a conversation with Mr. Lawrence.
And after, okay.
Yes, uh, and we can do that through, we can do that through a motion, uh, but right now, I think I'm a little bit uncomfortable that we've posted something that perhaps does not accurately reflect what actually is going to happen, which could be because it's been changed since then, but I think that it's important for us to...
To make sure that everybody, all vested parties understand what I agree. So, so we, I will take a motion to close the public hearing and...
Yes, sorry.
So the Hillside poles, though, on the public, if we're updating the public hear, hearing notices are incorrect, the numbers?
Yes, yes, we're aware.
Okay, all right, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I guess, I guess I have one other question too. When we were talking about Weaverley Road, poles, we were detailing a whole bunch of poles further up 114 that were getting relocated that didn't show up anywhere on the plan, so I would say, if, if, if they're removed, make sure everything, I guess in red that's moving is included in that.
Or green.
Because we're gonna ask the same questions again.
And I would also say that prior to this, we did ask for drawings that showed where the buildings were relative to the poles on the properties, and this is not that. So, um, so I will take a motion to close the public hearing and request that National Grid refile with correct information and re, they'll have to re, um, notify...
Re-notify, re-notifications, yep.
Re-notify all the butters, et cetera, and only come back to us after, after having a conversation with the landowners at Hillside.
Okay.
Or any others that are impacted.
Or anybody else who...
Who knows what they're...
So, so moved. You want that restarted?
Nope.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are...
Would you prefer it as one hearing, because we purposely split it out because it was three different locations?
I, I think we should probably keep it as three different hearings, I really do. I think it's too many moving parts to keep, I mean, yeah, so... That would be great, so...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I opened a public hearing for all three, and so we're closing and ending public hearing, and we're going to ask them to refile, so...
Thank you.
So, yeah, that makes the most sense, um, so we are officially out of public hearing. Okay.
Yep.
No action on items F, G, and H.
Great. All right, so on that note, thank you for coming and we'll see you again. We'll try again in a few weeks.
I know Franklin's a long drive.
I, I was thinking the same thing. It'll be quick tonight. I know someone in Franklin, so I was like, woo. Okay. Thank you. So we are going to move on to item I, a vote to sign the letter of support for the open space and recreation plan. So, um, I would welcome Krista Moravec to come present to us. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so we're here tonight, so we came and visited you back in March and did a full presentation. We had a, a short one this evening, I don't know if, um, sure? We'd be happy to see it if...
Oh, am I supposed to bring my own? Oh, okay. Oh, I wasn't sure that I... If I didn't know.
And we did send you a copy of the letter earlier.
Okay.
Um, so it was just a brief overview, just to recap where, uh, just to remind you of, um...
Of our ask. Do we wanna just maybe take items J and move those along?
Sure.
Give her a minute to hang it up?
You don't have to leave, stay there. All right, we're gonna go to item J. Is there anybody, it's the request from the Neurofibromatosis Northeast for approval to use Salem Forest, Ingalls, and Lacy Streets for the 14th Annual Coast to the Care Bike Ride on September 6th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, so...
Ma'am Chair, I move approval.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Moving on to item, item K, um, the vote to approve the end of year budget reallocations. So I'm gonna send that over to...
It's that fun time of year where we, um, can move around some of our funding for the last, take, only around the last 45 days, May and June, basically. Um, we have until July 15th, Finance Committee met earlier tonight. Um, the majority of these transfers are actually because of snow and ice, which you can see from the chart. Um, we moved money from snow, from, uh, Public Works, a lot of that was because of some vacancies that we had, um, and some money from, um, employee benefits, put it into debt service because we had an additional debt payment. We took our debt in the middle school a little bit earlier than we thought. Um, so routine, normal things, um, but these are approved under the Municipal Management Act by both you and the Finance Committee.
Okay, any other questions? I'm glad we can cover ours and theirs.
Move the Select Board to approve the end of year budget reallocations as presented.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll quickly go through item L, which is the annual appointment of election workers, so it's pretty self-explanatory. Every year. I'll take a motion.
Ma'am Chair, I'll move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
As of July... Sorry.
Madam Chair, I, I moved the Select Board to point as of July 15th, 2025, all election workers listed in the Town Clerk memo dated July 7th, 2025. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Do we do all those in favor? You want us to learn about government?
I'll put comments over.
May I re-motion?
Re-motion?
Go lost there for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, back to...
We're back.
We're back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so just a reminder why you all updated your open space and recreation plan. It's very important because it helps you maintain the benefits of those resources. As a planner, we like to understand where we are, where we want to go, and how we're gonna get there, so this plan does that. Um, it allows you to, uh, look at your successes, um, are you meeting your needs and challenges of the community? And having a current approved OSRP keeps the town eligible for funding from DCS. Among other sources, allows you to, uh, have that planning, uh, uh, aspect when you apply for other types of funding as well. Next slide, please. Um, and again, a reminder of this plan doesn't necessarily sit on the shelf, but the town works to complete, um, to, to complete its action plan. These are, so some highlights from what, uh, has been done, uh, for open space and recreational planning, uh, since the last update. Next slide, please. Um, some key milestones through the update process, so, uh, public engagement is a big part of it. So we had, uh, two public workshops, one in September of 2023. Um, in between, we had a community survey that we had done, uh, followed by another workshop, um, that following summer. Um, worked on drafting that plan, we met with, uh, the different boards. So, uh, DCS, who, the Division of Conservation Services there, the reviewer and approver of the plan, uh, their requirements require letters from Select Board, Planning, uh, Planning Board, and the Regional Planning Agency, uh, and for North Andover, it's the Meramec Valley Planning Commission. Um, so we sought letters from, from those entities as well as the Conservation Commission, also, we were here in March. Um, and since that time, we also submitted a draft to DCS for their review, and they provided a conditional approval in May, uh, so they had some comments that they would like us to address, um, including, uh, including those letters of support, so that's where we are now, uh, bringing those together to submit, uh, back to DCS. Next slide, please. Um, just a highlight of what's in the plan, uh, we have a community profile, we inventory the environmental resources, well as the town's open space and recreational assets. We discuss community needs as they relate to, uh, as analysis of needs, so community needs, uh, natural resource protection needs management, so the town's, uh, needs to operate and manage these resources, goals and objectives, and a 10-year action plan, which I will come back to in a moment. Uh, next slide, uh, we have four main goals.
Do you want us to wait a 10 years?
It's a bonus, uh, so, um, there are four main goals in the plan. Uh, goal number one is to implement this plan in conjunction with the town's other policies, your other plans, your regulations, um, protect the town's natural environment and its open spaces for these various reasons, water quality, habitat, climate resilience, um, to provide residents with all, all residents are opportunities to be active. Um, and then four, build capacity of the town, um, to local cap, excuse me, capacity to support planning, protection, management of these resources. Um, so just to highlight, uh, some of the comments that we got from DCS, you know, really, um, nothing, uh, uh, you know, changing the substance of the plan, so really just clarification on resources. For example, they wanted to make sure that we highlighted those that were protected, uh, with Article 97, talking a little bit more on outreach, the letters, as I mentioned, um, and then a 10-year action plan. Um, so the initial, um, guidance, the workbook that DCS has from 2008, it required a seven-year action plan. In March, they released a new guidance that now allows towns to have 10-year plans. So they gave us an opportunity to, to, uh, apply for that. So we updated the action plan to reflect a 10-year time period. And that is the, that's the last slide. Um, so we're here tonight to circle back to our request, um, when we were here earlier, to, uh, for your letter of support for this plan.
Great.
I'm here to answer any questions that you might have that have come up.
I, I read as much as I could.
Thank you.
Um, I, I think it was obviously very thorough, very well done, appreciate the community outreach. I know you guys got a lot of public comments as you went through the process. It's one of the, the, one of the best things about our communities, our, is our voluminous open space and recreational opportunities.
Yes, very much.
So I think it's really good. One, one of the things I did, I have a question on the...
Sure.
Objective 2D, increasing public awareness about local conservation land and open spaces. And I, I'm only calling this up because this started when I was on CPC. We had begun a project to improve signage, uh, around all the properties that have been acquired to increase that awareness. Um, I'm not sure how far it's gotten, other than I know on new projects, we do require signage, but I didn't see it listed as one of the, something in the action plan, but it's something that is kinda already underway, but may have stalled a little bit, and I think having a nice nudge from this plan might be helpful to that.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't know if we're able to make any kind of last-second edits in that regard, but, um, this is one thing I, that I noticed as potential.
Yeah, I guess, oh, Amy Max, our Conservation Administrator, so coming from Beverly, um, as I was exiting Beverly, they were working on sort of like a cohesive signage program for whether it's welcoming you into Beverly or the open spaces. Um, I don't know if that was addressed at all, if that was, but I'd like to see that, like, I don't want hodgepodge of, you know, when you have something really uniform throughout the town, it's, it's really attractive, and it shows that, you know, the community really cares about these areas and, um, so...
Yeah, I, I think about...
I would hope too, though, that because of the, you know, the town was settled in 1642 by the Barker family, that kind of have a, a nod to, that we're a very old community, and I would say in the United States, we're a very old community. There's not too many. But I love where you're going with the, the, the signage and the way it would look, so it fits in with the character of the town and what we like to think of the town, it's a very...
We have the wavebanding plan.
We have a wavebanding...
Exactors completed, uh, which kind of leads to that. But I do think that Tim on CPC has continued the...
He has?
Yes, the signage.
Excellent, okay, good, because we, we did, we go through that process of, of creating a uniform signed package that goes along with every CPC application, so I, I agree with you. Uniformity is important, that's what you see something to recognize as an asset, so, good.
It makes it look neat.
That was all I had.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Okay, on that note, I will take a motion.
Move out the Select Board to sign a letter of support for the 2025 Open Space and Recreation Plan.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Your support. Your support.
Thanks for coming back.
All right, we're gonna head into licensing, so on that note, I'll take a motion to move to open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it over to to Dave.
Um, we have one application today. It's a request for a special one-day wine and malt license and an entertainment license from Armin
Checneborium.
Thank you. Uh, Checneborium, uh, on September seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from twelve to six PM at Saint Gregory Armenian Church, and a request to waive, uh, the hundred-dollar fee. Um, we have someone, uh, that's speaking on behalf of the, uh, of, uh, on the application, so do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure.
And give us your name and address, and
My address, too. Um, Lisa Arpovian, I'm the Recording Secretary of Saint Gregory's Board of Trustees, I live at fifty-two Taylor Street in Havrell, Massachusetts, um, and I'm here to represent Armin, I'm sorry, he couldn't make it this evening. Um, this is way less intimidating, by the way. I like going last. Um, this is my first time here, I'm just looking at the notes that he sent, and he just said that, um, we've done this in the past, um, we asked that the fee be waived, um, and hopefully you can oblige. We use the funds from our picnic to fund church operations and support our outreach programs, um, and he said, if asked, I'll just offer it up, that there's no more than a hundred and eighty people at one time at this event. Hopefully, some of you have been there, it's fantastic.
Um, who actually does the serving of the, you know, of the liquor?
Um, we have somebody that has whatever that
Tips, tips, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
One of my questions.
Yes.
Does tips serve, so you hire someone that's tips certified?
I think that Armin is tip certified. I don't have that information, but, um, I'm pretty certain that it's him, I can text somebody to find that out if you need it, but
And is it one, one or two servers there?
Just one.
It's gonna be, it's probably in the application. Potentially.
Thank you. Yes, that's it, the server's tip certified.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you. They have liability insurance and, uh, permissions. Guys, any other questions?
They, as she said, they've done this several times before.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a motion.
The only thing is, you, you might, um, Saint Michael's, the butter, um, they have a picnic, too, so you just might
I'm sure they, I'm sure they coordinate that.
They do, yeah, they have their, sometimes it's on the same day, but they have it in their back parking lot or across the street at their school.
Okay. Yeah, we, we now be, because they took the building down, they, they, uh, now have place for a gathering.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Oh, that's lovely.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's nice, yeah, it's nice. The Common was great, though, too. But, yeah, there's
We used to have our picnics at the Common as well, it was hard to get the food back and forth.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Very inconvenient.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I'll take a motion.
Uh, I'll move the Select Board acting as licencing commissioners, approve the application for a special one-day walt-, eh, walt-, wine and malt license and an entertainment license from Armin Checneborium, uh, Checneborium, on September seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from twelve PM to six PM at Saint Gregory Armenian Church, and waive the one hundred-dollar fee.
Second.
Any discussions on the motion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'll take a motion to close licensing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, mister.
All right, and we are now on to our consent items. Um, I would accept a donation in the amount of seventy dollars to the Festival Committee for sheep shearing, a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Diane M. Sullivan to the library, and accept a donation in the amount of three thousand dollars from the Friends of Stevens Memorial Library to the library, and as always, it is with our thanks, but I will, and we're gonna channel Dick Valencourt again, so I will take a motion.
I'll move that this Select Board accept all consent, uh, uh, all consent items.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to look at the open session minutes of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five? If there are no changes, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approve the open session minutes of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Select Board updates. Anyone?
I got nothing.
Quiet, summer. I would agree.
Spent a day at, uh, spent, spent, spent a day at Stevens Pond, uh, last week.
Oh, that's nice. I have my pass, but I haven't made it yet.
Was this where you're going?
It was, yeah, it was working, I think all, three of them, right?
Yeah, I know, I've been, all looking at all around us, I'm like, I'm just gonna roll with that.
We should thank the Festival Committee for an outstanding fireworks display.
Yes.
Oh.
And overall great
You could almost catch them, though.
Yeah, in terms of, have we met since then?
Um, if no other updates, we'll move on to the town managers' report.
Couple of quick things, um, we did send a notice out about trash today, we wanna remind people that, well, we're not directly impacted by Republic Services labor strike. We are experiencing trash delays due to their employee shortages, so we appreciate patience as that is going on, but we do, um, ask people to continue to report issues through the reported on the website, because if you don't tell us, we don't know if they didn't come, so, um, we appreciate that, and then we also wanted to just recognize TBI and Star Waste Systems. As you know, Board, we've had issues with our recycling, because our recycling actually goes to Republic, um, for the actual dumping of it, and TBI and Star Waste have really stepped up to help us, um, with hauling it, with finding places to bring it, and so that we haven't had disruption on the recycling side, um, and so that's been very helpful.
Listen, question on that, so if you've submitted a report it, and your trash hasn't been picked up, and it still hasn't been picked up, how many times should you resubmit the report it, asking for a friend?
So if I, um, your street is quite a lot, um, so interestingly, you know, you know when it's a good day or a bad day, based on the number of reported
Extra days.
I, I would report it again, so what happens is, and it's very frustrating, um, through the reported system, the, there's no way to kind of mark something as like, um, pending, right? So we, what we do is when we move it from reported to, um, Republic's list, it immediately marks it as resolved, which is very frustrating for you at home, because it's not resolved for you, your trash is still there, um, it's really not resolved for us either, right? So I would encourage you to, um, submit another reported if you
Twenty-four to thirty
Yes, if your trash is still not being picked up. I also encourage you not to bring it in, don't wheel your trash can in. I would leave it But some people, what some people are doing is they're, they're bringing the trash can back, right? So they're, they're doing a report it, and then they're wheeling their trash in.
And you don't know when somebody's gonna pop over to get it.
Yeah, so, um, I do appreciate that, and, um, I appreciate everyone's patience, it's been very, it's been very trying. Um, makes me glad that we're not one of the more impacted communities, but it's still been trying.
And we know Jim has been working really hard to
Yes, Jim has been amazing, so we're very thankful. Um, National Night Out, August fifth, six to eight PM, in Hay Stadium, we have our children's shows ongoing right now, so we've got one the seventeenth, the twenty-second, the twenty-fourth, the twenty-ninth, and the thirty-first. And then our Sunday concerts on the Common, um, July twentieth to twenty-seventh, and then, in August, our stage will be ready, end of, maybe.
In August?
Oh, come on.
What happened?
End of August, so we may be able to have one of them on the stage, but for right now, we are, we're winging it on the grass, and it's going fine.
I thought this was like a week-long project, but it's okay.
It has to cure.
It looks so close to being done.
So close.
Secure in order to put
Yes.
We are required to put railings in.
That makes sense.
And the, the cement has to cure. Don't rush the concrete here.
That's what we're waiting on, yeah. All these hands, yeah, lots of stuff going on, and then the final thing is the Chief Gray issued today commendations for, um, Communication Officers Hamel Porter and Cruto, Officer Seaweed Wedge, Furman and Jimenez, and Sergeant Gerke for their actions on July third, when armed subjects robbed a jewelry store on Chagrin Road. Um, working with the Lawrence PD, they captured four of the subjects and recovered eight hundred thousand dollars worth of jewelry, which is amazing. Um, so our thanks to those communications officers, police officers, and, and sergeant, um, for, for their actions, and if you saw any of it on the news, um, it was a shocking amount, so they did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Great. All right, our next meeting date is Thursday, August fourteenth, um, and I will take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do we need to talk about it? No, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.